Okay, welcome everyone to December 14th City Council Work Session. We're going to go into Executive Session pursuant to ORS 1926602E. Eugene City Council will now meet in Executive Session to negotiate real property transactions. The Executive Session is held pursuant to that ORS I just mentioned. Representative News Media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the Executive Session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the News Media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the Executive Session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in Executive Session. At the end of the Executive Session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. So, ready to go?
Ma'am.
Okay.
We are. Tonight, we just wanted to give...
Welcome back, everyone. So, I think what's next is, first of all, I'd just like to recognize and welcome the new Director...
General Manager.
General Manager, thank you for the term. General Manager of LTD, A.J. Jackson, she's back here. Welcome. We're glad to see you. Okay, and then I think the next item up is a few words on Housing First, correct?
And this is, you know, in your 7:30 meeting, there's a couple of motions coming out of the HRC City Council meeting, and we thought it might be nice to give just a brief overview of Housing First now because there'll be a little bit more time with that. And then you have two other proposed motions right after this. So, Jason, I'll give it to you.
Thanks, John. My name is Jason Dedrick with the City Manager's Office, here to give you what I think will probably be the fastest council presentation I've ever done.
Two slides.
Two slides, yes. So, you know, we're accomplishing our goal of keeping things simple, just to really give you some very basic information on Housing First for your meeting later on tonight. So, it's purely information-based. So, I'm just going to review these slides. This information all comes from the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. So, these are, everything that's here is based on kind of their standard language as they pursue Housing First, or at least help communities work on it. So, very simply defined, it's an approach to quickly and successfully connect individuals and families experiencing homelessness to permanent housing. And the operative words here are primarily the "quickly" and "successfully" and the "permanent" housing. That's what makes Housing First different. It's based on the premise that everyone is housing-ready, and really, it's the providers needing to be consumer-ready. That's kind of the operating premise. There are no preconditions or barriers to entry such as sobriety, treatment, clean criminal history, wow, that's hard to say, or service participation requirements. So, again, just, the idea is there are no barriers, there's nothing to keep you necessarily out. Clean criminal history means there could be some portions of your criminal history that would exempt you from a Housing First model, but not necessarily everything. And then the last really big part of the definition is that supportive services are offered to maximize housing stability, but they are not required as part of it. So, when we dig just a little bit deeper into these core components, rapid and streamlined entry into housing, basically, this is to help reduce anxiety and uncertainty that often comes with an application process. The applications are not rejected based on credit history, rental history, et cetera, that kind of speaks for itself. Use of alcohol or drugs in and of itself is not considered a reason for eviction, however, if there were to be issues and they would be disturbing or harmful to other individuals or would lead to other problems, then they could be considered a reason for eviction. Again, supportive services are voluntary. They're obviously, they're a key component of Housing First, however, they are not required. And so, in a Housing First model, the services are there, they're voluntary, your continued housing in a Housing First model is not contingent on actually engaging in those services. Tenants have full rights, responsibilities, and legal protections, and they are educated about them. This really goes back to the idea of permanent housing. It's meant to emulate what actual housing is like for anyone who would be in a normal rental market. So, you have a lease, you have rights and responsibilities, you have legal recourse and know how to access it if you need to. Practices and policies are in place to prevent lease violations and evictions. Again, this also revolves around education, flexibility, and payment, if you need a payment plan or an installment plan to meet your monthly rent, if you're having issues with that. And then finally, that a Housing First model can be applicable in a variety of housing models. So, it's not necessarily just one building, and Housing First means all of the units in that building are Housing First. It could mean that, but it could also mean that individual units in projects scattered around a community, that is also another way to go at Housing First. So, that's all that I have.
And I would just add sort of the why did they move toward the Housing First model? There's a couple of reasons. One is what the research and what has been demonstrated is that if somebody actually gets put into some sort of permanent, stable housing situation, one, as there are services that come around that person that they are, that often they find them to be more effective because they're in a stable housing condition, and two, that the cost for actually keeping somebody in permanent housing is oftentimes less than the cost of their use of the public safety and public health system. Doesn't mean the overall cost can now, you can't reduce your number of police officers or hospitals, but the actual cost for that particular individual is shown to be less than trying to have services just as they're in unstable housing. So, there's a couple of really good reasons why people have moved to the Housing First model.
I just wanted to add that this is the description that is being used throughout the community for Housing First, so it is the accepted description. Yes, Chris?
Oh, thank you. I think it's really a great model. I know it's been used successfully in other areas, and I would probably be curious about some additional information on the utilization of services, residivism rates, you know, things like that, because I know we talk about it as a strategy to save money, which it has demonstrated that it does, and also an option to get folks off the street, which is also demonstrated as it does. So, I want to think the next jump, you know, that's the first jump, and I want to think of the next jump, which is, is it actually benefiting the people that are participating in the system? For example, services are voluntary. I'd be interested in knowing what is the utilization of services on a voluntary level, and what does that result in? When I've been involved in human services, ultimately, what you want to do is to improve the overall self-sufficiency of people. You want to get them to a place where they become self-sufficient and can function. And getting them into a dry, warm, secure place is certainly a step in the right direction, but it's not the only step. So, I think Housing First is something we can really support for the first jump, and I want to see what kinds of best practices we could do to also make it a positive, if the next jump after that, and the next jump after that. So, if we're going to do it, let's do it in a way that's positive all the way down the continuum. And so, I just know that it's successful monetarily, and I know it's successful in terms of getting people off the street, but I would be interested in those other kinds of successes. What are the utilizations? What's the residivism? You know, those kinds of things would also be really helpful to know.
Claire?
So, it just so happened, we had a Human Services Commission meeting today, and I mentioned that we were going to be discussing potentially endorsing Housing First as a policy that the city supports at that meeting, and the staff member for the HSE, Pearl Wolf, provided me with a list of, showing the fact that we actually have a number of Housing First programs already in operation in Lane County. Hacksaw operates scattered sites for 12 families and 61 singles for homeless households with disabilities. Shelter Care is probably our largest provider of Housing First for people with persistent mental illness or brain injuries who will never be able to be self-sufficient and need housing, otherwise, they'll be on the street. And I can list a whole host of others. So, there's about a dozen, maybe more, currently in place Housing First programs that our social services are supporting now. So, it's not like we're not doing it, but I think the discussion at our 7:30 meeting is whether or not we want to put greater emphasis on it as a strategy. And I think your questions are good, and I think mostly the data I've seen from Housing First programs in other cities where they were newly implemented saved significant amounts of public dollars on treating the same person over and over and over again, and once that person was in an apartment and sheltered, whether or not they accessed home services, they weren't going to the emergency room as office, they weren't going to jail as often. So, while we wouldn't reduce our police force, our police force would be able to deal with the other things in the community that we all hear about they want them to be dealing with, so.
I'd also say two other things about that, is that, one is, obviously, there is a need to have shared information about Housing First, so people around this table and around the community really understand it better. And then, secondly, that we do do it, but we need to scale up considerably to have it really make the difference that we're seeing in other states and in other places. And so, it's not that we haven't been doing this, it's not that we don't know that it works, it's just we haven't ever been able to scale it up to really have it be the number one way we go about trying to get people off our streets and into housing. So, that's the considerable step that we're talking about taking in our later meeting. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, we have some motions. We're going to do two of them in this time period, and both of them are Counselor Taylor's.
Okay. I move to direct the City Manager to sign the necessary paperwork in order to remove from the deed of the Very Little Theater property the city's right to purchase the property.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You want to talk about it?
This is really just a routine thing, and it's something they discovered when they're thinking of expanding and getting loans that would be a handicap if the city has a right to re-purchase the property, and I don't think it's anything the city ever wanted to do anyway. It will help them in their future plans for expansion or remodeling.
Chris and George. I've got Mike, and Chris, and George Brown. Polling. Okay, and as you manager, you want to...
I want to just explain just a little bit on what it is, in that way.
I can provide a little more background. So, when the city sold this property, I think it was about 60 years ago, the city included a right to repurchase in the event that the Very Little Theater decided not to use the property for the Very Little Theater. When you've approved property transactions at times, you've included something similar, the property is being sold for a particular purpose. If the developer, property owner decides not to use it for that purchase or purpose, then we want the right to repurchase it so that we can turn it over to somebody else. The Very Little Theater is engaged in an expansion effort. As Betty said, the bank, or whoever they're trying to borrow money from, they don't like those kinds of provisions, and the Very Little Theater's request is, you know, we've used it as the Very Little Theater for 60 years, would you trust us enough that we're going to continue to use it that way and agree to remove that restriction so that they can actually get the financing?
And no concerns?
We don't have any concerns.
Okay, all right. Mike?
Now that the mayor's covered my question, I will say I'm very much in favor of this idea.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I basically got my question answered, so I'm fine.
Okay, George Polling.
Same here.
Well, okay, all good, ready to vote then. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. All right, next up.
Okay. I move to direct the City Manager to schedule a public hearing on the proposal to name the Amazon Headwaters property that the city acquired as Aaron Noble Headwaters Park.
Second.
Moving, seconded. Do you want to speak to that, Betty?
Well, this is, as you all know, the Noble family helped purchase the property, and Aaron Noble was the young man who died in a plane wreck a few years ago now, three years, three and a half years ago, and it was his, he'd lived there most of his life by it and hiked in it, and was planning to help the city acquire it at the time of his death. So, it seems like an appropriate name.
Greg?
I'm in support of this, but I have a question. Don't we have an established policy, a naming policy for parks, buildings, et cetera? And my question is, is this the appropriate procedure for doing that?
The council does have a policy, and depending on the nature of what it is that's being named, there are different ways to do it. For certain kinds of things, staff can actually name them if we're talking about a trail or something like that. For property this large, only the council can approve it. There are different criteria that are included, but ultimately, there's a part of the policy that says anything outside of this process comes to the City Council, and then you can approve the name if you decide after public input that you think it should be named that. So, the answer to your last question, Greg, is yes, this would be an appropriate process to follow.
Okay. Mike?
Don't I remember correctly that when we did the transaction for a part of the property we purchased from John Musumichi, that we named it after Suzanne Arley in the process of doing that?
Correct.
So, we have a precedent for doing this exactly in this way, and I'm entirely in favor of it as well. I have friends who were mutual friends of Aaron's as well, and I know the importance of that property to him in his life, and I certainly know of the importance to his parents now, and I think it's a fitting thing to do, so.
Okay. Other comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you.
And that will be scheduled for the January public hearing date, which I forget what the date on that is.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, January 19th, so.
Okay.
That'll be the, that's the first available date.
So, last up, our committee reports and items of interest, and I'm just going to go around the table and see if anybody has anything they want to report. Chris?
ElCog held its December meeting last week, and everything went well. They also were discussing the impact of PERS, which every government is going to be talking about. In their case, they'll be figuring out how to absorb those PERS costs into their regular budget, but overall, their budget is still doing well. They have sold their building that they owned in Springfield to the Springfield School District. So, that was a great purchase, that not only did ElCog get rid of a building and the debt that goes with it, but they were able to sell it to one of their partners, and they could put it to good use. So, with the sale of the Schaefer's Building and the sale of the Springfield Building, they're down to just one building, and I think they only have like three or four mortgages as opposed to the 10 or 12 they had before. So, they have definitely done a lot to get their financial affairs in order, so very pleased. I'll also be attending the Poverty and Homelessness Board for the mayor later this week.
Thank you for that. All right, Greg? Do you have any items of interest?
No.
Okay, Claire?
Sure, I've got a couple of things. The Lane Act met last week and put together our priority list for funding for road projects for what's called the STIP enhancement, or just, excuse me, the STIP, which goes to a whole other process that involves other jurisdictions, and we all get to kind of battle it out on whose projects are going to get funded, but the Eugene Roosevelt Bike Pass enhancement was high on the list there. And that would complete part of the bike path that connects with Highway 99, and that's not finished along Roosevelt. And we've also got the Rivers to Ridges Bike Way on the list as well. And we had a general conversation about feeling fairly optimistic with the passage at the federal level of the transportation funding bill for five years, that there's additional money that's going to come to Oregon, and some additional money to come to our regional act. So, we are feeling pretty good that all the projects on the list have a very good chance of getting funded, and a number of them are in other communities, that includes safer up-to-school routes enhancement. So, I was personally happy about that. And then, at the Police Commission last Thursday, due to some things that had happened at prior meetings, the Police Commission had a discussion and adopted a working agreement for how we will conduct ourselves at our meetings, and this is a working agreement that actually the Human Rights Commission has adopted and offered to us as a template. And I think it's a very valuable document in terms of respectful communication and being mindful of how we present ourselves as a public commission. And the Chair of the Commission, along with the Human Rights Commission, may be forwarding that working agreement to the council, just to let us all know what's in those working agreements, and perhaps with the recommendation that we consider sharing them with all our boards and commissions. So, you might be seeing that as a letter, a joint, I don't know if they'll follow through on that or not, but that's what we discussed at the Police Commission.
George?
Thank you. I don't know if this is a coincidence or they're here to spy on me, but the LTD EMX Steering Committee heard, welcome A.J. to our meeting. To kind of sum it up real quick, it was a presentation on moving ahead and Vision Zero was given to the Steering Committee, and basically, it was a recap of our meeting. Trying to get all this together. Kristi Kruger, I think that's where you pronounce her name, she is the City of Springfield Principal Engineer for the Franklin Boulevard improvements, gave a presentation. And one of the, two of the things that I found rather interesting was to better incorporate the pedestrian bicycle traffic and the bus traffic and everything else going on at that intersection. They're actually proposing three roundabouts. Two of them are right there at that main intersection, and one would be just west of that. And then, to take up the space, and I've got some conceptual pictures of that, to take up some of the space in these roundabouts and to add some art similar to what's on the, like at the I-5 Bridge there at Willamette, Kristi went across the street to the school, the kids across the street at the academy, and asked for some input, and they've come up with a basic design for two, the double roundabout, and again, this is not drawn to scale or anything, but basically, that's what it's going to look like.
Oh, that's cute.
We passed that around.
Oh, that's really cute. That's awesome.
So, it's kind of a artwork-type thing to kind of...
I like that a lot, it's really creative.
And then, let's see, what else? I have a hard time reading my notes sometimes, I'm sorry about that. Update on the EMX operations and projects, about 30% done on the trees and shrubs, 30% done on the project. Trees and shrubs will be done on Christmas, this is the Eugene, West 11th one. Utility relocation is in progress, should take about three or four more months to finish up Sixth Street, and then Seventh and Eleventh, depending on the utility relocation. So, that's kind of condensed down an hour and a half meeting.
You took good, George.
If there's something else that they would like to add, I would invite A.J. to come up to the table and put a two cents worth in. I don't think she wants to.
Betty? Thank you. Our rapid is not meeting this month, like a lot of other things. IGA Committee's going to be reborn, I think, soon, we're going to start meeting, maybe. And I did, I went to a Cub Scout meeting the other day, it was a lot of fun, and second time I found a use for the picture of the council that was taken at the State of the City last year, showed the children who was in their city government, and they were interested, and they pointed out, just as the other group did, I went to a school group before this, and they said, "There aren't many women, are there?"
It's quality.
Glad somebody noticed.
Oh, slick.
I think he's in politics or something.
My dog was invited, she went too, but, and all the little kids, each of them, fortunately, there were only four of them, so it didn't make her too fat, each of them got to give her food. Yesterday, I got, and one day, I got a number of complaints, and I did write, John, about this, I don't know if you saw it yet or not, but the Roosevelt School site, their pollution is materials going into the Amazon Creek with the flooding, and people asked, didn't they have to, or some people asked, why were they allowed to build there even, and others are saying, isn't anything going to be done to keep the water out of the creek, which is, of course, dangerous to the people downstream who drink the water, and to the fish and the water fowl and all those things.
We're following up on that, just so you know, yes.
Good, it was, there were a lot of people, I didn't, I didn't know whether anything could be done on Sunday or not, but the people were quite concerned. And then, I guess everyone's aware that we're hearing a lot about keeping Keesey Square as a public place.
Really?
Great, hearing a great deal about that. Thank you.
So, I did want to say that actually, I had a call on that, on issue on Sunday night, and sent a message to John about that, so. And I would reflect, as you recall, we did have a big discussion with the school district about that very issue, and we had a difference of opinion about whether it was okay for them to build in that way on that site, but we did not prevail in that, in that discussion. Just, you recall that happened.
John was out putting sandbags out, I guess, Sunday night.
Hey, George?
I'll pass, Mayor.
Hey, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate Claire's report on Police Commission, I was not able to attend, but I had... I was not able to attend, but I had gotten the materials and had some degree of conversation with staff regarding the issues she mentioned, and I was happy to see it resolved so well, and appreciate the leadership in doing that. I agree and would recommend that, I think the model that was chosen to be passed by Police Commission is a good one for all of our boards and commissions. Having been on HRC before, I remember that as well. That was my conversation with staff as well, that we should probably take it in a positive direction rather than otherwise. I also wanted to say thank you to John, technically to Sarah and her staff, and planning and permitting, and a number of constituents, actually, living all around a particular construction area in my ward, where they're building a great deal of multifamily housing in a particular project. And it's been, the neighborhoods are all very close in and very dense nearby. It's been noisy, but then the particular folks applied for a noise variance to begin work at 5:00 a.m. on weekdays, which concerned the neighbors. And our staff was very prompt, responded very well. That application was not approved, but the neighbors are all very, very happy that it went very well, so.
I guess my bit of news, which I've shared with all of you in one form or another, is that I had the opportunity to be invited to join in a two-day summit of West Coast Mayors with the Mayor of Los Angeles, San Francisco, Portland, and Seattle. One day was spent on the homeless issue and sending some requests to our federal government to raise the level of priority about dealing with those issues at a national level. Everybody's struggling with this, and I will share more information with you about that. The second day was on climate issues, and again, the mayors all came together with a statement and some priorities that we tried to work on together. And so we signed two agreements, and had some press conferences, and spoke to the Portland City Club, and shared a lot of best practices, a lot of good information, and formed the West Coast Mayor's Alliance to work on those issues and other issues that are the priorities for the entire West Coast. So, and that alliance will encourage other mayors to join in that as well. So, it was a busy, the weather was wonderful, as you know, and so it took three hours to get to Portland. And so, starting out about 4:30, going till 10 o'clock at night, getting up the next morning, working all day, and coming back. So it was a really neat experience for me, and I was felt very good for our city, that as you noted from my list of cities, we were not among the biggest ones. So, it was a wonderful thing for, I think, for Eugene, Oregon, to be sitting at a table with the major cities from all along the West Coast, and being part of this conversation about how we leverage our mutual muscle together. It was really a very interesting, and I look forward to following up on that. So I wanted to share that with you.
Mayor, I just have one quick item. On Friday, the Veterans Housing Project cut ribbon on the Eighth House. And what's, a couple really interesting things about that, LTD donated the house, which was very generous of them, and there were about 125 volunteers and 1,000 volunteer hours or so, actually rehabbing that house over the last several months. And so, that will be used by U of O student veterans, and so it's actually a great house for them. And then the Ninth House, which is a place that Far West Steel has been involved in and helping us, will be completed here in the next probably 30 days as well, so.
Very proud about that work that's been done. Thank you for that, John, and thank all of our partners for that. And thank you, LTD, you had a great contribution to make, we appreciate it very, very much. Okay, so, we're going to do, before we wrap up this meeting, we're going to do consent calendar, unless someone has an objection.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, being none. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor, none in opposition, it passes. And with that, we'll finish this meeting, and we'll be back at 7:30.